This conference will now be recorded.
Members of the governing body and members of the public, good evening, good afternoon, or good morning, whenever you may be watching this. Due to COVID-19, city staff will be recording our presentations for the foreseeable future to the governing body and the public in order to limit the length of time that we spend at public meetings in order to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Tonight or today, I'll be presenting on the future of the downtown and specifically a public-private partnership proposal being concerted by the city for what we are calling the Phase Three of our downtown or city center development. Now, this is an important issue that the governing body wants to hear from the public on, which is why we did the town halls back in December, and we continue to publish information such as this presentation. I want to thank all of those members of the public and the governing body who participated in the over five town halls that we had in December. We had 131 surveys filled out and roughly 93% support for the downtown initiative. For those of you who attended those meetings, I apologize if I'm repeating a few points from that town hall session, but there, I promise you, there are, there is new information that will be presented in this presentation as things have changed since December. I must admit, I did enjoy the town hall setting much more and presenting in public than speaking to my computer right now, but this is part of our COVID-19 response to keep people safe. So please continue to practice social distancing and please be safe. So in order to facilitate remote participation in these meetings, we are asking that you please email your comments and questions about the downtown development to our city clerk, Lana Connor. You can see her email address on this screen. She'll provide it to our mayor, Jeanette Rochelle, who will be reading these messages out loud in the public meeting. Please, just as if you are participating in the meeting, provide us your name and address so we can read that into the record. We will still be attempting to broadcast this on the normal cable channels on Comcast and Verizon, but we'll also be live streaming the public meeting on YouTube, and we're going to try as well on Facebook Live. The schools have made available their upstairs boardroom, which has this capability. So we'll take comments and questions during the public hearing either via Facebook Live or feel free to call in during the meeting at 703-335-8808. Again, please provide us your name and address when sending your comments so that your message can be read into the record. We'll record the meeting as well, so just in case if you can't listen in Tuesday night, you'll be able to watch it on YouTube after the fact, and feel free again to email us any comments or questions you have after watching the meeting and after watching this presentation as well. For COVID-19 specific concerns, we are not doctors here at the city, so if you have specific COVID-19-related concerns, please either call your primary doctor or the Prince William Health District Call Center at 703-872-7759, or the Virginia Department of Health at 703-ASK-BDH3. For food support, that is something that the city is providing support right now. If you're a senior citizen or a resident with underlying health conditions per the CDC, I provided a link right here, so you can read the last page of the CDC guidelines. It actually specifies what are the underlying health conditions that you should be concerned about if you have, and try to stay at home if you do have one of these conditions. If you're one of these groups, please call our city COVID-19 hotline at 703-335-8802, or you can email us at CMP-food@manassasparkva.gov, and we can schedule food delivery support over the next few weeks as people practice safe social distancing and staying at home to protect themselves. We are exploring opportunities as well for how to expand our service to those who are unemployed because of COVID-19 as well. I just want to thank our city staff. They've done a great job of transforming into a flexible food delivery service, or specifically our Parks and Rec Department, Social Services, and our members of the staff of the City Manager's Office. They've done a great job in leading this effort, and then our other departments who continue to provide ongoing services during this time to our residents. So moving on to the agenda for this evening, what I'll be going over is the updated concept plans for both Phases Three and Four. I did show the concept plans for Phase Three at the town halls, but that concept plan has changed, and I'll highlight what those changes are. And unfortunately, during the town halls, we didn't have the concept plans for Phase Four. We do have that now, so I do want to share that with everyone, the governing body and members of the public as well. Then I want to go over the actual fiscal impacts of these developments. We never want to pursue developments that are going to lead, be a fiscal loser for the city and create a negative impact, so I want to run down what the numbers look like for this development. The third component that we'll be going over is the city hall building and how we're financing that mechanism for city hall. So as a reminder, during the 2000s, the majority of city facilities were either built or had major renovations done, with the exception of the city hall building and the Public Works Building, which are the oldest buildings, public buildings in the city. They will require major renovation or a new building, so those are major capital liabilities. So that's one of the major benefits of the downtown development is we'll probably be able to address both facility requirements without incurring additional burden on our taxpayers. I'll then be going over the actual comprehensive agreement for Phase Three. That's being still under negotiations, but I want to go over the structure of the agreement and then some of the highlights coming out of that. But that is still under city attorney and attorneys from the developer, their review, along with city staff, our consultant, working with the developers on development of the exhibits, especially the city hall and financing exhibit. And then I'll just provide some concluding thoughts. If you're at the town hall, you can, you know, not listen into that section because I'll be repeating some of the same themes about why we're, we're taking this initiative to develop our downtown. If you want to listen, that's fine. I'll just be repeating a lot of the same things, however, that I said during the town hall. So Phase Three and Four concepts. Before I go specifically into the Phase Three and Four concepts, I just want to revisit what we mean by our downtown or our city center. So technically, the city center redevelopment district is on both sides of the BRE station, so on the west side, which is shown on this slide here, and then things on the parcels on the east side as well, just outside of the BRE station. Tonight, we're focused more on the western side of the downtown, the critical components of the city center redevelopment district, and those that we're actually taking action on here over the next few months. So as a reminder, this is where our current city hall is located. Across the street, we have what is called Phase One, or what everyone knows as the city center building, now called Park 170 at City Center. That was completed during the 2000s and had a lot of issues that I'll be going over. Behind it is Phase Two, which is halfway completed. It was an agreement done in 2013, and the expected completion now is 2021. The second half of that development is currently under site plan review. What we'll be mainly focusing on this evening is what is called Phase Three, which is the largest phase and the most important phase for enabling the success of the downtown. And that Phase Three is located right here where our current city hall is located, along with some undeveloped land that the city owns as well, and some existing parcels. We'll also briefly discuss Phase Four, because this is an integrated strategy for the development of our downtown. Phase Four is just to the east of the Phase One, Park 170 at City Center. Just to revisit Phase One and Two, of course, as everyone's familiar with these buildings for, that are called city center now, Park 170 at City Center, you have 291 residential units and roughly 49,000 square feet of retail. That development, of course, was not successful from a retail standpoint due to many issues. One was timing, completed just before the Great Recession. We had bad ownership. It was not interested in fulfilling the retail components of that development. They were trying to wait the city out and convert it into residential units, and the city remained committed to making the retail work. But from a more important standpoint, from a retail standpoint, you lack the necessary parking support to support that retail, and then there was no plan for a commercial anchor. And I'm going to use that term this evening a few times, and what anchor essentially means is, is a business that brings in the traffic and the people to that business, and then has a positive spillover effect for other businesses around the anchor. The anchor usually also allows you to tap into markets beyond just your primary market for that area, but even secondary and tertiary markets as well. So there was no plan for that as part of the Phase One for the city in the 2000s. Phase Two, again, was an agreement done in 2013. The city owned roughly eight acres behind the Phase One property. They sold it in 2013 for a mixed-use development, the first half of which consists of this seven-story apartment building known as Artena, and just behind it, back here, is another 17,000-square-foot office building housing our social services on the second floor and a Montessori school on the first floor. The second half of the development is estimated completion at 2021, and I'll go over what was entailed in that Phase Two. So this is still on Phase Two. There's actually two components that are not contiguous in Phase Two, starting here on the left. This is the Yapi Cuttery business, so on the other side of the railroad tracks across the street from the Palisades Apartments, and right next to the Yapi Cuttery, there'll be a new development that's part of the Phase Two. This building right here is designated as a steakhouse right now. All American Steakhouse is negotiating a lease for that building. Again, the timeline, expected completion for that is 2021. When you move over here to the right, this box, if you envision, this is where the social services and Montessori school building are, and here to the right is where the existing seven-story apartment building known as Artena is located. So behind, this is a parking lot here. Behind all that is where the second phase of the Phase Two of the, of the downtown development is going to be worked on over the next few years, and that entails a 45,000 square-foot office building. The goal for that building is medical uses and potentially academic uses, and that's still, you know, being pursued, and then an additional seven-story residential building as well. Again, these are, this, these two developments that are part of Phase Two are under site plan review, so if things go well, then we hope that this can be completed by 2021 and added to our tax rolls, but sometimes site planning may be delayed, the process, and even construction may be delayed as well. But right now, we're sticking to the timeline, the goal of 2021 for completion. So overall, for the downtown, people are aware that Phase One was a failure, but really the downtown was a failure. There was a lack of a comprehensive strategy to ensure commercial success of the downtown. We have the right timing right now because of the BRE garage plan to really drive success in our downtown. That was not available to the leaders of the city a decade ago. We have that opportunity right now, plus to plan the remaining phases in an intelligent way to make sure that we have success. So what's being planned, starting with Phase Four, then I'll go back to Phase Three. But Phase Four is very simple. The goal for Phase Four is to provide that parking that I said was missing from the Phase One retail. To provide some adjacent parking will then enable roughly 25,000 to 35,000 square feet of retail to be filled at the city center by providing adequate parking. So this portion of the retail, what's called Building B, and then a significant portion of Building A as well, will be supported by both this parking plus what we're going to do on the other side of the street as well. But all these parcels around here will be redeveloped to enable that successful downtown parking lot to be provided to ensure some additional retail and restaurants in Phase One. Phase Three is, again, is the most important development. Even the Phase Two office building, the success of that is, and the success of the retail here at City Center, is really dependent on Phase Three being a successful development. And the reason for that is the number one goal for Phase Three is to bring in the anchor business, which would be located right around here. That anchor will then help drive the commercial success, and I'll discuss what that anchor is here shortly. The other goal for Phase Three, to avoid the mistakes of Phase One, is to make sure that when the BRE garage is built, that it is properly situated to maximize support to the commercial core of the city, and that it's not too far away to not support retail in the evenings and weekends on off BRE hours in order to maximize commercial success. So previously, the garage was slated to be located approximately right here. Now, we're going to shift it closer to Manassas Drive, roughly around here, so that it can support all the retail that's going to be concentrated here for the downtown. The third critical goal for Phase Three is the new city hall, so this building would be demolished and the new city hall would be built right here. So first, this building would be built, we would move over, and then this would be demolished to enable the remainder of the development. Again, the, the benefit of the new city hall project is it alleviates a capital liability that we would otherwise have to either incur debt on over the next decade or utilize existing taxpayer money through our CIP to figure out how to finance that project. Through the development agreement, we're going to be able to secure that city hall through the economies of scales of the developer themselves, from the trade-offs of lands and proffer value provided from the development, and then through the new tax revenues generated from the development itself, not including the commercial tax revenue, but the real estate and personal property. That revenue alone will be more than enough to cover the remaining expenditures of the new city hall building. So it will be alleviating a future taxpayer burden through this development agreement. And then finally, we're hoping to maximize kind of the additional retail capacity that the city has per the consulting reports that we received, and really focusing that retail here in what's called the four-corner area where there's believed to be the greatest retail and restaurant success capacity in this location right here. So that's, those are the goals for Phase Three. So who are the developers or the developer partners that we're, we're working with right now? So for Phase Three, what's, the public hearing on Tuesday is going to be mainly focused on Phase Three. The lead developer there is Norton Scott. They're a mixed-use development company that has portfolio of projects both in Virginia and Illinois. Their major project right now in Virginia is in Loudoun County. It's called Concora. I provide the link right here if you want to look at what they're doing up there. The residential builder that they'll be utilizing for this project is Toll Brothers. They're a national residential building company that provides luxury homes. And then for Phase Four, the developer's name is Oxoylu Properties. They are, they were one of the major developers of Liberia Avenue, and they have other developments throughout the DC metropolitan area as well. They are the owners of the Artena Building, the seven-story apartment tower. They purchased that about a year and a half ago, and they're interested in continuing investments in our city. So this is the updated concept plan for Phase Three. As a reminder for orientation, this, right here is where the current city hall is located, and it's no longer on this concept, of course, it will be demolished, but just to situate where you are, this is where the city hall building is, and then over here to the left is Phase One, or what's known as Park 170 at City Center. This is Manassas Drive, and then you have Park Center Court. So the major changes from those who attended the town halls in December, back in December, we were showing a layout that include both, included both apartments and two-over-two condos. The apartments were located up here. The total residential unit count back in December with the mixed apartment and two-over-two strategy was just over 390 units. By replacing the apartments with all two-over-two condos, that unit count has gone down to between 290 and no more than 315 per the current framework. So we've actually reduced the residential counts since the December town halls. And the other benefit of, of moving the portfolio to entire two-over-two versus a mix of apartments and two-over-twos is Phase Four will consist of additional apartments, so you don't want to flood the market with too many of the same types of residential units themselves. So these back here, plus back here are the two-over-two residential pieces. Moving to the left here is the proposed location for the BRE garage. That is a 500, or it's now a 640 roughly parking space garage. 550 is for the BRE users, riders during the daytime during the week, and then the evenings and weekends available for the downtown. And then the new sub first floor, so the ground floor level of the garage is roughly around 90 spaces. That's going to be public parking at all times of the day and the weekend to support the downtown. You can see the proximity of the garage now to this four-corner area of the retail. Moving here to the left, this is a standalone, what's called Building C, retail/restaurant building. This is the proposed new city hall, which also has ground-level retail as well, and it's going to have a library with some additional amenities that I'll go over later in this presentation. This is the city square, what we're calling it, or also known as the plaza, where we plan to hold multiple city events in the future and really make, bring out the modern town center feel to our city. That has changed, so that, and the layouts that were shown in December was actually on the other side in front of the, on the theater side of the development. It's now been moved to the city hall development or to maximize kind of available space. We, it was shifted to this side, and it's actually grown. So it was 30,000 square feet in the proposal that was shown in December. It's now grown to roughly 36,000 square feet of, of a public plaza, so we have a much larger square to, to work with as a city. On the other side of Park Center Court, this large building here, that's the anchor. That's the movie theater business. We've been working with Cinema Cat Day. They sent us a letter of interest back in December of 2019, and they've had ongoing discussions about what type of theater they want to have. The most recent news is that they are looking to commit to a nine-screen theater here as soon as this agreement, if it is approved by the governing body, then we'll enter into actual either purchase negotiations or lease negotiations between the developer and the movie theater company as well. But that movie theater, that is, again, one of the main drivers of why we're doing this is to bring that anchor to the commercial downtown for the city to enable the success of the retail that currently exists and that we're going to continue to develop going forward. That anchor will, will tap into markets approximately five miles radius around the city as well, per the market analysis. Adjacent to the theater is another small retail pad for additional retail or restaurants to really continue to provide life to this four-corner areas. Down here will also be retail as well, right off the plaza, and then above the theaters, so on top of the theater, will be an additional two to three floors of commercial office space as part of Phase Three. Forgot to mention with the garage as well, there is a pedestrian bridge right here from the garage across the actual train tracks right to the heart of the actual terminal. And the benefit of that is for all the residents who now live in this area, Park 170 or Artena, or even further up across from Euclid Avenue, those who walk to the BRE station, and we have a lot of pedestrian walkers to the station, they no longer have to walk this way and cross the railroad tracks. They'll be able to walk through on Park Center Court here on this plaza or the city square, walk right here and use this bridge and be right at the terminal. So this is a much safer way for the public to have access to the BRE station. They can also pick up a cup of coffee on the way. We're planning on having a coffee shop right in this location here on this corner off the plaza, so as you're walking to the station, feel free to stop by, grab a cup of coffee, and continue your walk to the BRE pedestrian bridge and the BRE platform. I'm sorry. So if you are standing right here where this arrow is, and you're looking out to the actual square in this commercial development, the next slide is what you will actually see, or what, as an illustrative example, it will not look 100% like that, but that is the illustrative example that will, that has been developed for the downtown. So again, you're standing on top of the BRE garage, and you're looking downwards. What you'll see is the standalone retail/restaurant building here. You'll see the new city square plaza right here with the splash pad and other play amenities, outdoor seating and dining for the restaurants on the square. This is the city hall building with ground floor retail and restaurants. Across from Park Center Court is the movie theater, then the commercial office. And at the very end, you can't really see it here, but that's supposed to be additional retail and restaurants here, and you can see across the street the existing Park 170 retail spaces. So you're, you're creating a commercial four-cornered area right here through this development. Behind both of these commercial developments is where you have the public parking right here, and also back here as well, including then the BRE garage parking as well. The benefit of this development as well is that you're going to have some additional ways to get in and out of this downtown. So you can see a connecting road here to access from Manassas Drive. It actually wraps around, so it'll take you to the BRE garage from back here. You can't really see it on the screen. That's another road to access the garage instead of needing to utilize Park Center Court, so that would help alleviate some of the congestion on Manassas Drive. And we're also bringing Connor Drive. Phase Four, the plan is to build out Connor Drive to bring it to Manassas Drive. The city right now is utilizing state and other transportation funding to bring Connor Drive out to Route 28, so that would provide, once that's done and once Phase Four is completed, people will have an alternative way to access Route 28 instead of just Manassas Drive or Blooms Quarry. You'll also be able to utilize Connor Drive as well. So Phase Four will then bring Connor Drive to Manassas Drive, and Phase Three will then bring it. You can't see it on this image, but it'll wrap around here, go into the ground level of the garage, and the road will continue. It's not, not shown here, but imagine the road going through here, and you can see the exit of that road. So that road continues back here, so it's another road that cuts through or that goes around the commercial core of the city. So you're providing multiple ways in and out to limit the traffic impact from the development. Again, providing just the descriptions for your reference of what's located in, in this, as part of this development. When discussing those multiple ways in and out of the downtown area, the beauty of now having those multiple ways, as you see these red, almost stop sign-looking icons, you can shut down the roads at these locations. So you're closing off Manassas Drive in this portion. You're closing off a piece of Market Street and then Park Center Court as well. You're able to close that off now for downtown events and while not impacting traffic. So traffic will be able to either drive up here if they're coming from the, the eastern side of the railroad track, they'll be either able to turn left on Connor Drive and get it, get out to Euclid Avenue and go wherever they want to go to Euclid, or they can stay straight on Connor and get to Route 28, or they can turn right and go around this way if they prefer to stay on Manassas Drive, and then cut around here and then turn right to continue on Manassas Drive. And if you're coming from the western half of the city, you can drive down Manassas Drive and turn left here and go around, or you could even turn right on the Bank Street and go behind Park 170 and come out here on Connor Drive. So there's, there'll be multiple ways to kind of loop around the downtown, and again, that allows for downtown festivals, concerts, and other things to really bring life to our downtown with our Parks and Rec Department taking the lead for those festivals. Toll Brothers provided an example of, of the types of two-over-two developments that they're looking for in our city. If you've never seen a two-over-two condo or what they're referred to as stack towns, this is what they look like, and Toll Brothers provided this illustration for you all to see. Moving on to Phase Four, because again, this is an integrated downtown strategy. Again, this is Connor Drive. One of the major goals for this development is to be able to bring Connor Drive out to Manassas Drive, or people can turn here and go back through Market Street as well. The main priority, though, for Phase Four is this public parking lot here, roughly 150 parking spaces that would then support the Park 170 at City Center for both residential and also retail. So by having this adjacent parking here, it's currently located back here, but that's too far away to support any retail. When moving that parking lot to this location... When moving that parking lot to this location, now you're adjacent to the commercial spaces here at city center. So this parking lot would enable again roughly twenty eight thousand to thirty five thousand square feet of retail. That would can now be supported in our city center, when you factor in the garage that's located here and the remaining parking on phase three. That again provides additional parking with the movie theater anchor that should ensure the success of the city center phase one finally. And, and see some real retail success there. The other components of phase four is a hundred thousand square foot commercial, that was called a mixed use commercial building. Business incubation, office and potentially hotel executive suites as well because of the proximity to the V R E station. And then the developer would build two apartment buildings, these buildings would require podium parking to make sure that we have. Adequate parking ratios for both the residential piece and the commercial piece of this building. And the retail on phase one of city center as well. And again, that developers, Oksoi Lu Properties, who's a big developer on Liberia Avenue, so they do both major commercial developments and also residential. So moving on to the fiscal impacts of these development initiatives. So summary upfront, bottom line upfront, twenty six point five million dollars in estimated profit. From these developments and that's without counting the potential sales tax, meals tax. And B poll, the business license tax revenues generated not only from the additional commercial developments that will be built here. But also what that's going to do for phase one in terms of allowing for those retail spaces to be filled here. In my analysis, I did not factor a single penny from those sources of revenue. Because I wanted to maximize a conservative estimate of what the fiscal impact would be. And also to make sure that whatever revenues we are generating from the sales tax, meals tax and B poll, that that really just enables a. Much brighter financial future will be a very financially strong city, able to support all the different initiatives. That our governing body and our public want to pursue, you know, whether it's tax cuts, increased pay. For city employees and school teachers as well, our capital liabilities that have been deferred. There's a lot of priorities that we want to get to, so we want to make sure that this development itself generates significant amount of profits for us. To then utilize for those components. When looking at this analysis, we utilize F Y twenty two through F Y fifty two. The reason why we did that is F Y twenty two right now is a scheduled date for when we'll, we'll start to actually see. Some of this development come online and then F Y twenty two is the last year of a lease purchase payment. That we'll be paying for the city hall building, so I wanted to make, show that over that thirty one year time period. What the fiscal impact was, now, once you move on to fifty three, the profits begin to grow much further as well. Because you're no longer making those lease purchase payments, but I wanted to demonstrate that even while we're making those payments. We're going to see a strong positive fiscal impact from this downtown initiative. And you got to start with the revenues always to see what kind of revenues you're generating from this development. So the tax revenues generated are roughly a hundred and nineteen million dollars. And on the next slide, I'll show you how that was derived, but these are net taxes from real estate and personal property. Net of existing private parcels located on these phases three and four. What they currently generate from a real estate, personal property and business license standpoint. Taking those amount of dollars and subtracting those from the new. Real estate and personal property taxes generated from the new proposed development. From this development from both phases three and four, we are going to see some cash as well from both the land sale and a proper component. Some of that cash is going to be utilized to deduct from the city hall payments what we owe and others will be direct cash received to the city. For support in payment to the city hall payments and for other components as well that I'll discuss later. So the total revenues for that thirty one year period is about a hundred and twenty eight million dollars rounded up. Payments to Norton Scott, the, the primary developer or the developer for phase three for the city hall lease purchase agreement. Is forty six million dollars, the net present value of that is twenty five point four million. And that's the number you'll see when I get to the city hall slide showing the, the cost of the city hall. It's, and the associated site plan and public infrastructure provided in that development. The cost is twenty five point four million dollars, but when financed over thirty one year period, you're paying forty six million dollars. But net present value is twenty five point four million and I'll go over what that would actually cost us if the city were to go. And, and try to do this initiative by ourselves without getting the economies of scales of the downtown development. The fiscal impact cost, what that is, is that's an analysis of what the additional developments, how that will burden. The city in terms of a capital standpoint, a debt standpoint, F T E standpoint for both the city and schools. And of course, for the schools, the biggest driver of that is going to be the number of students that it creates. So utilizing a formula that we created in F Y eighteen and then assuming a two percent annual growth from that formula. The number that was derived was roughly a fifty five million dollar fiscal impact to the city from this development. The total of these two expenditures are a hundred and one million over that thirty one year period. So when you subtract the revenues of a hundred and twenty seven point seven million minus a hundred and one point one million. That's where you get this profit of twenty six point five million dollars over the thirty one year period. Remember, we're already covering the fiscal impacts, so that fiscal impact profit can now be utilized for things like tax cuts. For additional capital that we're not able to do right now and also pay increases for both teachers and city employees as well. Now, the actual available amount to the city is the eighty one point four million that you see down here. And that number is simply derived from adding the fifty four point eight plus the profit of twenty six point five. And why I'm doing that is simply because we're assessing that this is the fiscal impact from the development. From the city standpoint, we've developed, continued to develop since two thousand nine, however, our staffing levels. Are actually lower than they were back in two thousand nine, so we're actually spending less from an employee standpoint and a capital standpoint now than we were in two thousand nine. From a comparative standpoint, yet we've continued to develop, so simply because you're developing, it does not necessitate that you actually have to spend that money. Of course, we need to catch up because we've been struggling as a city. You know, from, since two thousand nine, but you don't necessarily have to spend that, so you have this fifty four point eight plus the twenty six point five. The city now has eighty one point four million dollars over the next thirty one years from these developments. To, to focus on all the different priorities that we have to become a financially strong city. So how we derive the tax revenue, so you can see here on this left over here, we have a real estate port section. And then a personal property section, for the real estate, you have three types of developments, you have the apartments on phase four. The condos on phase three and then the commercial developments, the commercial buildings on both phases. These are the estimated values, once these are fully built, not year one, but once they're all finally built. These are what the estimated values are from a static standpoint, those values of course will continue to increase. As total, the real estate market continues to appreciate over the years. But you can see the apartments are roughly fifty four million dollars in, in value. The condos are a hundred and sixteen million, so by far the largest. They also have though, however, a bigger impact on schools than the apartments, so just because a. Unit generates more revenues than another, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're deriving as much profit from that development versus the other because of that impact. And then from a commercial standpoint, the commercial property is valued at forty point five million dollars. When you apply the tax rate and we actually utilize, or the, the current tax rate of one dollar fifty five cents. When you apply that tax rate to these values, you generate three point two million dollars in total annual revenue. When you look at the existing revenues being generated from a real estate tax component of the existing properties on both phases three and four. You're talking about a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars a year in real estate tax revenue. So you take that a hundred and twenty nine thousand and subtract it from the three point two million, your net annual revenue is three point one. Million dollars in real estate tax revenue. Just for perspective, our current real estate tax revenues are around twenty five million dollars per year. So you're adding an additional three million dollars just from this development alone. From a static analysis, that means assuming no growth, but simply just multiplying that out by thirty years, that's roughly ninety four million dollars. In new revenues over a thirty year period. Moving down to the personal property, we determined this number of vehicles for both phases three and four. Based off of our, our zoning ordinance and the requirements for parking spaces generated by. The actual developments themselves, these vehicles then from a residential standpoint are going to pay the personal property tax bill. The average annual bill across the city is two hundred and fifty dollars and that's where we generated this two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Per year for personal property tax, as a reference, we're currently generating roughly three point eight million dollars. Total on personal property taxes, so you're adding roughly almost three hundred thousand dollars to that three point eight million dollars. Again, for this analysis, looking at the existing properties. And what they generate for personal property plus B poll, here I did utilize B poll to capture the existing revenue. Because I wanted to make sure that that was factored into the analysis, even though we're not counting B poll revenue in this analysis for what we're getting. We are subtracting the existing B poll from that analysis, so again, we're trying to be as conservative as possible in estimating the fiscal impact. So when you take the existing personal property tax revenues and existing B poll revenues for phases three and four, you're currently generating roughly thirty one thousand dollars per year. You subtract that thirty one thousand from the two hundred and seventy five thousand and you're left with roughly two hundred and forty three thousand dollar. Profit in personal property taxes each year. And I want to thank the Commissioner of Revenue, the Treasurer and the Finance Department for helping us with this analysis. And figuring out what the current revenues are and then again, to, to help us out with the financial analysis as well. When you multiply this from a static standpoint, this two hundred and forty three thousand over thirty years, that's roughly seven point three million dollars, so in total. You know, you're looking at just over a hundred million dollars between these two, that's a static analysis, you saw on the previous slide. That's a total over thirty one year period, it was roughly a hundred and nineteen million dollars, because that assumes a concerted two percent growth. And assessment value each year over that time period, of the last few years in the city, we've seen growth rates much larger than that. But again, we want to be as conservative as possible in our analysis. As previously stated, there will be proffer values and, and land values with this development. Roughly just under about one million dollars per acre of residential land. Here, there's for both phases and three and four, there's roughly thirteen acres of public property. That, that is being provided to the developers and we're going to yield roughly around a million dollars for those acres. And the commercial land value was much less at fifty thousand because we're trying to incentivize commercial development. There's no way you can entice retail development for someone to come in here and buy retail land and, and develop on their own. We're enticing them through this development and that's why you have a much lower value here, there's significant risk for commercial development. And that's, that's the issue, why it has to be a mixed use development as well. So that's rough, you know, you see a million dollars per net acre residential land and fifty thousand per commercial. Just a reminder that for the phase two development that was done in phase three, the city sold that eight acre tract for forty four thousand dollars per acre. And half of that development, roughly four acres of that development was residential, so compare that forty four thousand to the one million per acre. That we're getting here and that's a significant improvement from how the city's doing business now compared to how we were doing it back then. To ensure that we're maximizing the value of developments and making sure we're pursuing smart developments that yield the best return for the city. Moving on to the second bullet here, that focuses on the land values, so you're talking about roughly an estimated twelve point seven million dollars provided for residential land. One million for the one acre in phase four and the remaining eleven point seven million from the twelve acres on phase three. And then again, a hundred thousand for the two acres rough of the commercial land, remember, some of the commercial property in phase three is going to be. Owned by the city with the city hall and the public parking as well, and that's why there's only a two acre piece that's actually commercial. Proper values for phase three, two point three million, then from phase four, nearly six million. The reason why phase three has a lower proffer value is because of the additional benefits of the crew from phase three. Namely, the city hall and the public parking that's being provided by the developer in that. They're providing much more public value in phase three than in phase four, that's why phase four has a higher proffer value. Both projects though are incredibly important, you can't, none of this will work if the, unless both of these developments happen. Total cash flow to the city after deductions for actual public improvements, the city hall and public parking, it's roughly eight point three million dollars in cash. That will be provided directly to the city over the next five years if this deal is approved. Five point six million from phase three and then two point seven million from phase four. All this slide shows is that, how we developed the F Y eighteen fiscal impact analysis. And again, since that time, we've assumed an appreciation of two percent each year in these costs in order to generate the updated fiscal impact analysis. But that was a thorough analysis done in, in two thousand eighteen where we sat down with the department directors and we went over. Actual call volumes to police, fire, service levels, all those things and tried to create, you know, what the impact is per residential unit. And that gave us a better feel for what the impacts were, what was determined back in two thousand eighteen was that the actual apartment developments. That the city had pursued had, had generated significant profit, proof of that was that the previous years up till F Y nineteen. There was a significant spike in our debt payments in those periods and they were only, we're only able to cover those because of the increase. In the real estate and personal property tax revenues that were generated from these apartment developments. So when taking that F Y eighteen analysis and applying it out to this development, we determined that's how we got this. Nearly fifty five million dollar fiscal impact over thirty one years from both phases three and four. You can see the breakdown between city and schools, you see this asterisk here for schools, we're sending a hundred and twenty two school age children. And I just want to remind everyone that enrollment to our schools has actually declined by ninety students over the last two years. And is expected to continue to decline, so this hundred and twenty two is really just helping to slow down that decline. So decline is both, and student enrollment is both good and bad, good in terms of improves the teacher ratio. Bad in terms of the state funding for the city, one of the major factors in their funding determination is how many students are there. So we risk state funding as we lose more and more children, there seems to be a national demographic switch. With millennials and generation Z not having as many children as previous generations. So this is a kind of a future trend that we expect to continue to see, so this development just helps slow down that trend. Again, the projected revenues generated from the development is eighty one million dollars, that's more than enough to cover these fiscal impacts. With roughly a twenty six million dollar cushion in case revenues aren't as robust as we assumed. And or expenditures are much more than needed, I just want to caveat also for the revenues, we did use a ten percent margin error as well even for. Our real estate or, or assessment values as well for what we thought the properties were going to be, so we tried to be extra conservative in our approach. Again, that profit, that twenty six million dollars really enables our ability to reduce the tax rate. When we did the town halls back in December, there was ninety three percent support for the downtown. But also the majority of people who took the survey were demanding a reduction in the tax rate. And we've heard you loud and clear and, and that's why we're, we're pursuing strategies to be able to enable that for our residents. Just want to note that the proffer and land cash that the city will be receiving is really going to be oriented to help us make those city hall payments during the early parts of this development. Until it's fully developed out and we're maximizing the annual profits from that. But also it's going to be there to help us out with any V R E garage requirements if they're needed and for a public works building strategy. Remember that before I said the city had two major capital liabilities from a facility standpoint. That was the city hall and the public works building. The plan is with this cash is we're going to explore the acquisition of an existing facility. That would satisfy the needs for the public works department, thus, this project alone will satisfy the two largest capital liabilities. That the city has without utilizing existing taxpayer dollars to fund those initiatives. The beauty of these as well is that they do benefit the schools, both with the city. The beauty of these as well is that they do benefit the schools, both with the city hall providing space for the schools administrative wing. And then that public works building is going to be large enough to provide support for their maintenance, building and transportation building requirements that the schools has as a long-term capital liability themselves. So moving on to the city hall building and the financing mechanism. What this table is showing is how we calculated what the city actually owes for the city hall building. Starting at the top here, you see the cost of the building itself is roughly twenty million dollars. When you slide down here to the cost of the public improvements, so all the site work associated with that, all the public infrastructure, some of the roads, the stormwater components that are public use. That's, you know, that's this section plus the land acquisition that will then be transferred over for public use is this amount here. So these are, these two plus this or this one here, these three are the actual costs plus the financing cost of the borrowing that the developer is doing to fund the project themselves so that they can enter into a lease purchase agreement. That's kind of the financing costs associated with that. So you take the two cost figures up here and the two cost figures down here and you subtract them by two numbers. One is the actual city land value being provided to the developer. So in this one here, you see this night roughly twenty million dollars plus two point five million dollars minus the eleven point eight million. The city owes ten point six million to the developer for the city hall building. And the same thing here, you take these two expenditures and you subtract the cash proffer value of the actual development as stated before. The reason why the proper values is lower for this than phase-four is because of all the public improvements associated with it. And there you get fourteen point eight million. When you add the fourteen point eight million and the ten point six million, that's where you get the twenty-five point four million dollars that the city would owe for the city hall piece of the development. When we did as a staff our analysis of what this would cost if we were to pursue this type of construction development for our city hall based off of the data that we have for what it costs the city for the police station, we determined that would be roughly forty million dollars. So we're getting significant amount of like fifteen million dollars from the economies of scales of the developer and just lower pricing for what they can provide because they're going to be mobilized for a much larger development throughout the downtown. Plus the value, the equity that the city's building into this property, into this development via both the land and the proffer values that we have as well. So the financing mechanism again between the city and the developer. So we're going to enter into, if approved, we'll enter into a thirty-year lease purchase agreement between the city and developer. As a reminder, right now, the city has a twenty-year lease for our social services department offices across, as part of the phase-two development. So this is the first time we'll be pursuing a lease. The main difference is, of course, between this lease and that lease is that lease does not have an ownership stake at the end of the lease term. It's simply a lease. But that one, of course, we're utilizing mainly state revenues from the social services department to pay for that lease. Whereas in this agreement, we're utilizing new tax revenues generated by the real estate and personal property tax portions of this development to pay for this lease agreement. And the benefit of this one is the, it's a lease purchase agreement. So there's actual ownership stake for the city of the actual city hall building as well. So the lease purchase, the agreement itself is the foundation or secured by the actual building itself. The developer secures revenue via a tax-exempt certificate of participation. That money is put into an escrow account held by an independent trustee. The goal, if this agreement is approved by the governing body, is to establish that in October twenty twenty. The escrow is then drawn down by the developer as they're paying for the actual construction project for the city hall and associated site plan and public infrastructure work associated with that project. So the risk is really on the developer to guarantee kind of the project cost and completion schedule because the lease activates once the building and public infrastructure is in place. And then, starting in July of twenty twenty-three, is the current timeline, is when the annual lease payments would be made by the city to the developer to help them pay down the debt that the developer incurred from the development. July twenty twenty-three, that's an important date because the city's financial position improves dramatically even without this development in twenty twenty-three because of a sharp reduction in our annual debt payments. So the timing of this works out perfectly where the city has that financial flexibility to take on this lease. But again, there's associated cash that's going to be provided from the development itself in terms of proffer and land value that will help with the initial years until the full project is completed. And then at the end of the thirty-year period, of course, the unencumbered or the full title of the city hall building would go to the city at the end of the lease term in July of twenty fifty-two. And again, the revenues for this project are to be created from the development itself, from the tax revenues as the developments are built out and also the proffer and land revenues generated in the early years as well. So just as a reminder, you've seen this already. This is the kind of the aerial view of the commercial core of the cities of downtown, the phase-three portion. This building, again, as a reminder, is the city hall. I'm going to go over kind of the layouts on each floor here over the next few slides. So remember that we have the city square or the plaza located here. This is Manassas Drive down here, which is a street. And then above it, you have additional kind of plaza space. And then the other restaurant retail building is up here. And then you have public parking and the garage back here. So when, if you're standing on the plaza or you just are getting out of the movie theater and you look across the street onto the plaza, you'll see the city hall building and what you'll see first is retail and restaurants here, roughly four thousand square feet, and you'll see a coffee shop here. That coffee shop will have connection to the future downtown library of the city, which would be a two-story library, two thousand square feet on the ground floor here, connected to the coffee shop to enable people to grab a cup of coffee, come over, read your books or check out a book, head next door and get some coffee. So think of kind of a Barnes and Nobles cafe there. You see this grand staircase as part of the library itself to take you up to the second floor. Or you can use the elevator to go up to the second floor to access the second level of the library itself. You can enter city hall from here. And when you come in, on your right would be the library. On the left would be the emergency staircases or the grand staircase that's part of the library. And then if you walk, keep walking, you'll have the public restrooms here and then the elevators to access the other floors here. And if you keep walking, you'll have the registrar's office. So many of you are aware, we were trying to develop a registrar facility at one of the Blooms Park facilities that were made available to us via the boundary line adjustment negotiated with the county last year. Unfortunately, the bids came in too high and we were unable to continue to pursue that project. So we're working with the developer now to incorporate the registrar as part of the ground level of the city hall building. The reason why we were pursuing the registrar at the Blooms Park was really twofold. So there's significant concern right now about how we can manage the upcoming presidential elections and specifically the forty-five-day early voting requirements with the existing city hall that we have right now. So we were quickly trying to come up with a solution to provide adequate spacing so we could have a successful election. Plus, when you move the registrar back to the city hall, all that does is it eliminates the retail space. So this before was all retail. So you lost roughly around four thousand square feet of retail space that would have, on the other side of the street again is the Park One Seventy at City Center retail space. So you had that connection with the retail here, but now that's going to be the registrar. The benefit about this, however, is that it is now part again of city hall. So you have some economies of scales in terms of shared spacing, storage and other support from the city directly, and it is a centralized location for the city as well. And that was something we heard, because some concerns from residents about the location of the registrar not being in a central part of the city. So this change in phase-three now allows the registrar to join the rest of the city in the downtown. So as you take the elevator or the stairs up to the second floor, it'll look like this. You can take the grand staircase. If you were at the library, you had your coffee, you're in the library, you take the grand staircase. Now you're up at the remaining portion of the library, which is additional five thousand square feet of library space. If you want to get out of the library and you walk down this way, these are, these two spaces are flex office spaces. You'll see three different flex office spaces at city hall. And these three flex office spaces really serve a few functions. As the city continues to grow, staffing levels may continue to grow. So you need some additional flexibilities. Remember, this is supposed to be a thirty-to-fifty-year solution for the city. So you want to be able to build that flexibility to grow into these spaces if needed. If we're going to stay lean, then we won't need them. But what we will be able to do is lease those spaces out and then generate additional revenues to the city to help pay for the long-term maintenance of this building. Again, to try to make it a self-sufficient building and not a burden on our taxpayers. One example of this, in our current city hall, we actually lease roughly four thousand square feet to the Bull Run ASAP entity, which is a state governmental entity. But the, this is actually the financial trustee for that entity, but they're another governmental entity. There was recently a state social services RFP where they needed some office space as well. Had we had this then, we could have certainly bid for that. So there's other governmental leasing opportunities or even nonprofit and private sector commercial office leasing opportunities that will provide additional revenues to the city for these spaces until the city grows into them, if we do go into them and need them. But if you keep walking down this hallway, you'll see the chambers. And what we're calling these are essentially the board chambers. The plan is to have one, again, using our space as efficiently as possible, one board chamber meeting room for the city. So Monday nights would be the school board, Tuesday nights would be the governing body, Wednesday nights would be the planning commission, and then Thursday nights would be the other boards that we have, such as the new library board that's being constituted, the parks advisory board, and any other boards that we may have in the city that need to meet. This is a much larger space than the current governing body chambers that we utilize right now that can run out of space when we have some important issues to discuss. If you can imagine, when you walk into the chambers, the dais with the governing body would be back here. Behind them, of course, would be the windows overlooking the square and the movie theater and commercial office on the other side as well. You're also going to have now some additional meeting spaces and office spaces for members of, for the mayor and shared office space for the other members of the governing body or school board and spaces for them to conduct meetings with residents as needed. The beauty of having the chambers or the board meeting room right next to the library is when you're not having meetings here, the plan is for the library to use these large, this large chamber room as additional programming space for the library. So think of kind of a large children's reading time as well. So that, again, that's more efficient use of space. Instead of building out a separate large program room for the library, you can just take advantage of existing space that's not always utilized to maximize the size and service level of the library itself. So now going back and getting on the elevator, using the stairs and going up to the third floor of the city hall. When you get out, if you go this way, you'll see the school's office, the central office. And then if you go left, you'll be able to walk into a customer service center area, a pretty large area with chairs, TV screens and a kiosk where you can take a number and you can be called up to different customer service windows in order to pay your bills or to interact with both the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer for any services needed from them. So we understand everyone's frustration with the current lines, especially during personal property tax season and at the end of month for utility billing. We're going to try to create a much more efficient system to, you know, to make it a more user-friendly experience for customers. We're even thinking about having the number system shown at the library as well. So if, for whatever reason, you grab a number and it says number ninety-seven and they're currently at number twenty-seven, you can go down to the library, you know, read, read some books or check out the newspaper or go down and get a coffee or a sandwich or whatever. And then as the number gets closer to your number, you can go back upstairs and be ready to be served by the treasurer commissioner. The shared space here is, again, more efficient use for the treasurer commissioner of the library staff for things like lockers, kitchenette and conference rooms for them as well. So you, you don't have to utilize valuable library space or office space for the treasurer and commissioner. You can have a shared space for all three entities as well. So now, going back to the elevator or the stairs up to the fourth floor of the city hall. When you get out, you can come into the city admin wing for the city administration. That's the office of the city manager, the finance department, HR, the IT department, city attorney, city clerk, and then the development services division of the community development department until we can get the community development department their own building, which I referred to before as the public works building. Public works is actually part of the community development department, so we want to get that department together. But in the interim, there should be more than enough space either here or at the flex office for the development services to continue to service our residents with code enforcement, zoning administration and building permitting as well. And then these shared spaces here, this is where the city storage will be for documentation, especially for the commissioner of revenue and treasurer. They have a lot of legal requirements for storage of documentation, as does our city clerk. The server room as well for an IT perspective and then other shared needs that are available to the different city hall users as well. So those are the different components of each floor. And again, as a reminder, if you were to come off Manassas Drive onto Park Center Court and turn right and maybe park back here, you can either enter city hall this way. If you need to go to the registrar and keep going straight on the first floor, or you can turn right into the library. Or if you don't want to use the city and you want to walk down this plaza, you can access now the coffee shop or additional retail restaurants on the other side. You're in city hall, you go upstairs, second floor library above here overlooking the plaza, both the city square portion and the Breeze Way Plaza as well. Behind it, the governing body chambers overlooking the plaza. And on the other side, the existing city center, Park One Seventy building. Going up to the third floor again, you have the school's admin wing here and overlooking the city square. And then you have the commissioner and treasurer here overlooking Manassas Drive and the Park One Seventy building. Going upstairs, fourth floor, city administration, again, overlooking the plaza. And then the additional kind of shared spaces overlooking Manassas Drive and the Park One Seventy. The goal is to have signage on both sides of the building. So you'd want to have one off of the square saying Manassas Park City Hall, whatever we want to come up with and library. And then also back here as well for all the people, the BRE writers, kind of almost a welcome to downtown Manassas Park for the BRE writers as well. Other components, so as part of this agreement, there's going to be multiple exhibits. I'm going to talk about those other exhibits in the next section. But I just wanted to show you, there's one exhibit called the city hall narrative exhibit. That includes all these slides that I was just showing you right now, showing the layouts for each floor and the square footage. It also showed, it has a long narrative, multi-page narrative of what the city's looking for. We had the support of our consultant Arcadis help us with this exhibit with drafting the narrative after interviewing all key stakeholders across the city, including the office of the city manager, the schools, law enforcement, the treasurer, registrar, IT facilities, everyone was engaged in this process to understand kind of the requirements. But they put in other important things such as when the city is going to be able to review and comment on the progress of design. But there's a ten percent thirty-five, what are the different phasings of the city hall? And what's our intent and requirements for city halls? So this is just an excerpt from that narrative section. The narrative section then has multiple attachments themselves. One attachment is an adjacency example, which is like of these as bubble charts where you have these arrows showing kind of what needs to be next to what in order to make sure that the flow of the city hall makes sense. This one's a little bit outdated. We previously had the commissioner and treasurer on the second floor with the library, but there wasn't enough space once we got to further development. So we had to move them up to third floor. But this is just an example of what we provided to the developer. Our library consultants and contractors, LS and S, helped develop a concept plan for the library based off of an eight thousand square foot footprint. We're going to have to scale that down by roughly one thousand square feet now that we're laying things out in more detail. And our schools also provided an adjacency diagram for all their different components and what needs to be next to what, how many offices they need for what positions. Again, trying to forecast. Again, trying to forecast how, how they're going to grow and how we're going to grow as well. So we did that for kind of each floor. What also is provided in another exhibit that's part of the City Hall narrative is what uh, architects call the program uh, for a building and that simply lays out every single room that you're going to have in the building, what the estimated square footage requirements are, uh, um, what the net square feet are and then what the gross square feet is for each. So this is just an example of the first floor, what we had between the entry, uh, the public restrooms and the library. This is our best effort at developing a program that we're now engaging with the developer to finalize as well. We also provide just some example images and I want to thank the school division for providing these images up here. Uh, the superintendent and I kind of shared the same vision for moving the city offices to a more modern open office concept, which utilizes space much more efficiently and encourages collaboration versus everyone having their own enclosed office, uh, which can restrict communication and collaboration. So these are just kind of the feel. These are all illustrative. Uh, nothing again is final, it, it won't look exactly like this. These are just kind of to express the intent of what we're looking for, uh, for a new City Hall. Our consultant, uh, Arcadis then uh, provided additional pictures for things like the grand staircase, the customer service windows, which will uh, not only enhance the customer experience, but also make sure that we're protecting our employees as well. And then the new board meeting room, we're actually going to utilize movable chairs here. That way the library can utilize it uh, for their different programs as well. And then our library consultants provided just some concept imageries of what modern libraries are looking uh, like as well, along with laying out kind of the flow uh, in the program for what the different requirements are. Again, a reminder, we're right now looking at roughly a seven thousand square foot library. Uh, it's nine thousand when you count the, the shared spaces. It's actually a little bit more than that when you count the, the chambers and the shared spaces for uh, back office administration. Uh, you know, the, the whole technology, uh, server room component, storage. It's really over ten thousand square feet and then you have the additional two thousand uh, square foot shop, uh, coffee shop, which is actually connected to the library as well. So you're looking at roughly between ten and twelve thousand square feet, shared experience between the library and the coffee shop and the different uh, component, supportive components of, of a library. Moving on to the actual agreement, just as a reminder, this is not final. It's uh, the actual base agreement is under attorney review from both our city attorney and the attorneys of the developers, uh, the developers and city staff. You know, we've, we've come to certain agreements in terms of uh, actual uh, contract terms, but now it's under attorney reviews uh, to ensure uh, that everything is correct and that we're legally protecting both entities as well. So the PPA, PPTA, that's the Public Private Partnership Agreement, the structure. You have the base agreement, again, that's currently being reviewed by the attorneys. That spells out exactly what's to be developed, what the phasing and timelines are for those developments in, in kind of written format. Uh, the theater and lease, the theater either lease or purchase parameters uh, to ensure that we lock in uh, the anchor uh, via a favorable agreement for the anchor. Uh, how the land swaps will occur between the city and uh, the developer, the rezoning requirements, condemnation support, and then also the kind of standard legal contract language to protect uh, the city uh, as we engage in this contract. Again, you have the different exhibits, the main exhibit is going to be exhibit A, the master development plan that lays out the development uh, to kind of enshrine what needs to be developed. And any deviations from that would require amendments, just like what happened with Phase Two uh, over the last year and a half, where they came in for an amendment to their plan. Out of that amendment, uh, we were able to secure that additional stakehouse investment as well. Exhibit B is the interim budget, that's really the, the cost of the City Hall uh, and the uh, public infrastructure and kind of the financing mechanisms for that. And then you have exhibit C, which is that functional narrative for City Hall that I just went over. Uh, all the different slides with the layouts, the programs, the adjacencies, uh, and the actual written narrative as well. There's also what I missed to point out, there's also room data sheets that our consultant developed that really just specifies all the kind of construction requirements for each room. Yeah, the exhibit D, which is just listing out all the, the members of the, the large development team again. Lauren Scott is the uh, the developer and uh, but they have support from Toll Brothers as a residential builder uh, and also uh, other uh, you know, design architect companies and legal firms as well. So they have a large team supporting this effort, so exhibit D will lay that out. You have the initial schedule for, for the development and then the actual phasing for the development, which I'm going to go over uh, here shortly. Some of the highlights, uh, things that will require public hearings as well. Uh, so if the governing body uh, votes to approve uh, the agreement when it's in final form, uh, but from the city attorney, uh, if they uh, agree to that agreement and vote in favor, we would then schedule follow-on public hearings for, for the actual land swap uh, that would occur between the developer and the city. It's just as a reminder, the major one uh, that needs to happen sooner rather than later is conveying the base tract, uh, it's roughly a seven acre undeveloped tract behind the current City Hall to the developer in exchange for the car repair parcels. The reason why this has to happen soon again is remember where, where the VRE is in the process of developing uh, that garage, they have their own timeline, so we have to be consistent to enable the development of that garage in the best location to maximize the experience for both uh, from a transportation perspective, uh, but also from a city uh, interest from a downtown perspective as well. The difference in the value of the two properties will be put into a cash escrow account as well. And then the city will provide further land for the City Hall retail, remaining residential components as well. There'll be different kind of land swap components because there is still some private parcels that are part of that as well. And then at the same time, maybe looking to do a rezoning, uh, so the, the applicant will be or the city will be filing for uh, rezoning to a mixed-use development consistent with uh, the existing city center development. Uh, so initially we would do Phase One A, which I'll show you here shortly, what, what consists of Phase One A. That needs to be rezoned sooner or later again to enable the VRE garage. And then the remaining phases uh, will look to rezone in the fall of twenty twenty. If required, uh, we would also provide uh, eminent domain support uh, to the developer to acquire the remaining privately held parcel. And that's to allow for the construction of the City Hall, uh, which will be on that parcel along with public parking and that road, the extension of Connor Drive to the VRE garage directly into the new City Hall in downtown. And for the phasing of development, that's, that's also uh, part of the, one of the agreement highlights. These are the different phases of, so again, all of this is Phase Three, so I know this can get confusing when we say downtown phase and then within each phase, there's other phases as well. So I apologize for any confusion that that would create. But as part of the overall Phase Three agreement, there's uh, two phases and the first phase is split into two. So Phase One A is the initial uh, development. The goal was to have that completed by December of twenty twenty-two. That again, consists of the new City Hall, the city square plaza, uh, the standalone commercial uh, building, all the downtown parking with the VRE garage as well. And then the initial uh, two over two uh, development of roughly a hundred and seventy uh, two over two units. That's all part of Phase One A. Well, as soon as that's completed and uh, the city staff moves over from our current City Hall, which is located in this area, over to the new building, then they can demolish uh, the site here and uh, develop Phase One B, uh, which is the public, uh, the downtown public parking, uh, that's located here and here. And then also this commercial building, which is the main goal of this development, the movie theater, the commercial office and then uh, additional retail and restaurants as well. And then move on to Phase Two, so Phase Two can't start until Phase One A is completed. So we lock in our, our City Hall, the city square and the first step of the commercial development. And then it can't be completed until Phase One B is completed. So we don't want to, you know, repeat the mistakes of previous developments where uh, you know, the residential portions are developed out and then the, the city's left without any of the commercial pieces. So there's going to be language in the actual agreement to ensure that fade, you know, that really phases the uh, the construction of the residential and uh, tie certain metrics based off of the completion of the commercial uh, component for then get to the residential. The good thing is that it actually aligns pretty well. The current strategy for Toll Brothers is to develop roughly uh, thirty-nine to forty uh, units per year. Uh, so you're looking at expected completion somewhere between FY twenty-seven and FY twenty-eight. So this is kind of the overarching timeline for this project. We're going to pursue the public hearing this coming Tuesday evening, is why we're doing the presentation, this presentation. Uh, the final agreement will be voted on either April thirtieth, uh, which is a Thursday, or May fifth, if we want to keep the center kind of Tuesday meeting timeline. The reason why, again, we're, we're trying to push as soon as possible here is because of the VRE garage timeline. The land swap and initial rezoning public hearings are technically uh, going to be scheduled for May nineteenth. And again, this, the rezoning will be for Phase One A. The subsequent rezoning for the remaining phases of Phase Three would be the fall of twenty twenty. The Phase One A City Hall commercial component, expected completion in December of twenty twenty-two. Phase One B, the goal right now for the theater, the commercial office components is December twenty twenty-four through June of twenty twenty-five. And that aligns with the goal of Cinema Cafe, uh, they're, they're expanding to uh, other uh, businesses in Richmond area of, before they move for the north here to Northern Virginia. So the timeline works great for them. And then the residential phase is expected completion again sometime in twenty twenty-seven, uh, twenty twenty-eight. For Phase Four, we're looking to follow a similar timeline that, that agreement is still being negotiated. That's going to be different. It's not a public-private partnership agreement, but it's going to be treated more like Phase Two as a uh, purchase and sale agreement with a uh, master plan and other components. But we're trying to align, uh, you know, the public hearing for Phase Four along with these key dates so we can discuss these issues uh, together because it is really a comprehensive, integrated uh, downtown development to maximize the success. Some concluding thoughts, kind of why are we pursuing this development effort? Really, we're driven to do this because we want to provide a better community for our residents. We heard you loud and clear in terms of tax cuts, uh, pursuing this downtown development is going to be the best way to enable tax cuts for our residents and to enable pay raises uh, for our employees, for both uh, city employees and school employees as well. That remains uh, a top priority of our governing body and uh, city administration as well. We need to continue to build up reserves. Uh, as a reminder, in twenty sixteen, we actually had a negative uh, financial position. Uh, since then, we've improved that position, uh, we're building up our reserves, but we're still not in compliance with our fifteen percent uh, covenant requirements that we took on uh, when we secured additional debt, so we need to continue to build up those reserves. Uh, that's when we're going to be able to ensure uh, fiscal strength. We want to provide our community a central community gathering place uh, to bring everyone in our city together uh, for events, uh, for job opportunities, for shopping and dining. We need to expand the revenues, go into city programs, but also diversify those revenues as well. We're still too dependent on uh, residential uh, taxpayers, so that burden falls on our residents overwhelmingly. We want to diversify that burden, uh, move it, shift that to commercial where possible and expand the revenues available for schools, public safety, parks, roads, libraries, all those different components that the city uh, provides to our customers. Uh, roads, surprisingly with the town halls as well. Uh, one of the major priorities for our residents seems to be our public infrastructure as well. So we, we hear you on that issue as well and we remain committed to try to figure out how to fund these programs. And then we want to fund staff capacity to at least pre-two thousand nine levels if we can. Uh, and the, doing the downtown will provide us those revenues to be able to do that. And then again, I mentioned this before, but just creation of new job opportunities for our residents. Last point on this slide is again, the unfunded capital liabilities. The City Hall and the public works and then for schools, the maintenance shop and the transportation building. Those are facilities and we remember what kind of debt was generated in the two thousands when we last embarked on massive facility projects. This development of both Phases Three and Four are going to be, enable us to deal with these capital liabilities without burdening existing taxpayers. Our overarching financial strategy right now is survival of FY twenty-three. I meant, previously mentioned that our debt position improves in twenty-three with COVID nineteen. Uh, we're likely in a recession right now. So again, we're just reemphasizing the need to uh, be in financial survival mode until FY twenty-three, have tight budgets until then, continue to defer capital. In FY eighteen, we did across-the-board uh, cuts across the city. We continue to pursue areas of savings, including the library, where this year we'll be saving roughly two hundred thousand dollars on library expenditures to help get us that FY twenty-three. We've seen significant progress. We've done a lot of debt refunding that was enabled by us catching up with our audits. Uh, we were a few years behind, uh, back in, in two thousand seventeen. We got cut up, uh, cut up, cut up, sorry, and we were able to reestablish our credit score with Moody's and S and P uh, to previous levels despite our fund balance position dropping from a positive eight million dollars to an actual negative position because they saw the strategy that we were pursuing and the positive management uh, and, and, and policies that we've put in place since that time. And then lastly, the state has backed off from uh, considering labeling us as a fiscally distressed community again, because of all the strategies that we pursued over the last few years. In the median term between FY twenty-three and FY twenty-nine, we want to get to a sustainable position, so we never put ourselves back in this position again. We need to continue to build up our reserves. We need to enable our uh, tax cuts for our residents. Uh, and we want to again, resolve our capital issues via development, so we don't have to burden our financial position during that time. In order to get to the long-term goal of being a financially strong city, so just moving beyond sustainability, we want to become financially strong in the twenty thirties. To do that, we got to develop the downtown. That's what's going to provide the revenues for us to be uh, fiscally strong, along with proper management of our assets and our debt going forward so that we don't repeat the same mistakes uh, of the past. This is a slide I showed at the town hall in our previous governing body meetings. It's a very, very simple formula to, to think about how government operates. But you need your revenues to really balance your expenditures. On the right here, you have, you know, city staffing, uh, most organizations are going to be seventy percent personnel costs. That's the case uh, with, with our city as well, in terms of pay and FTE requirements, full-time equivalent requirements. We want to improve pay and FTE levels. We want to stop deferring capital and really improve our infrastructure. We need to build up our reserves, uh, and we need to get control of our, of our debt uh, for the future as well. That's on the right here, the expenditures that we have, that needs to be balanced out by our revenue. And you get your revenue, of course, by being able to effectively collect what's actually built. And our treasurer's doing a great job of improving the city in terms of our, our collection rate. Uh, but these are the, really the key components. And this one here, your tax base, that's when we talk about the downtown development, that's what we're trying to improve here. Simply because we have the highest tax rate right now in the Commonwealth, does not mean we have the most tax money. Because the tax rate has to be multiplied by the base and if your base is weak and you're not generating a lot of tax revenues from that high tax rate. So in order to reduce this tax rate while increasing these three here, we need to both drop the debt and we need to improve the tax base. The city's managing the debt quite well right now. We haven't incurred any new debt and we've, we actually refinanced a lot of our debt to bring that burden down. We've gone over the, the hump of, of the peak debt period. And now we're focused on how to improve the tax base through downtown development to enable both the tax rate to go down and for these three to go up. That's a simple formula that we're trying to accomplish right now. And again, the city center development or the downtown development, whatever you want to call it, that is the most important thing that we can do right now to accomplish equilibrium because we've already taken the steps to get our debt under control. Now we need to improve the tax base, so these two edges, tax base and debt are the two key issues for our city. By, well, we've already dealt with the debt issue, now we want to deal with the tax base issue. And that's why we're pursuing both Phases Three and Four Development. Again, we want to hear from you. Please, please email us any comments or questions that you have again to our city clerk uh, so that our mayor, Jeanette Rochelle, can read your messaging out loud in public, in the public meeting. Again, provide us your name and address, just as if you were here present, uh, so that we can read uh, your message to the record. We will be live streaming that meeting, so please tune in if you can. Feel free to send us messaging via Facebook Live or call this number here, seven zero three, three three five, eight eight zero eight, so you can provide us any additional comments. And again, the meeting will be recorded in case you can't listen in this Tuesday and you want to watch it after the fact on YouTube, feel free to do that. And then to email us any comments or questions that you have about uh, the topic of discussion. Again, some helpful COVID nineteen uh, numbers. We're, we're, we're doing this, this remote um, for this uh, you know, participation and stream, live streaming on YouTube in order to facilitate our residents to continue to participate uh, in, in these uh, meetings without having to be physically present. Uh, in order to keep yourselves safe, we are going to be filming additional uh, or recording additional presentations on the budget. presentations on the budget as well over the next few weeks. So please uh, stay tuned uh, for those presentations. But again, specifically for COVID nineteen, the reason why we're doing this. Uh, if you have any specific COVID nineteen uh, related questions, please call the Prince William Health District or the Virginia Department of Health or your primary care doctor. Uh, if you do need food support because you're a senior citizen who's staying home uh, to, to protect yourself or you're a resident with underlying health conditions, please again, look at this link from the CDC, look at the very last page. That lays out what the different underlying health conditions are, uh, that should be uh, of concern uh, with uh, COVID nineteen. So please protect yourself. If you have food requirements because you're staying home, please call the city hotline at seven zero three, 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 five, eight, eight, zero, two or email us at CMP dash food at Manassas Park VA dot gov. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to this presentation.